At the allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with the name just as it is.
Okay, report on posting the agenda and roll call.
Good evening. Tonight's agenda was posted on Thursday, December 29th, 2016 at 11:30 a.m.
So I have a question. If we could reorder the agenda, Planning Commissioner Chair Report. Oh, roll call, I'm sorry.
Roll call.
Commissioner Armandares.
Here.
Commissioner Ashford.
Here.
Commissioner Gullen.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Lai.
Here.
Chair Rodriguez.
Here. Okay, what I was saying, reorder the agenda, item number 14, Planning Commissioner Chair Report. Is it okay if we reorder? Does anyone have a problem?
You don't have to vote on this, it would just be a consensus. So, anyone opposed to reordering the agenda?
No objection. Okay. Are you worried about what I have in store? So Paul, we want to thank you, if you want to come up here, the Planning Commission. This is a proclamation of the Planning Commission of the City of Gilroy recognizing the public service of the Commissioner Paul Clucker. You've served the city and the citizens of Gilroy as a member of the Planning Commission from January 2013 through December 2016, and you've given tirelessly of your time and talents to the consideration of proposals of the physical development of the community, and you've been an active participant on many city committees, providing guidance to Planning Commission and City Council for the future growth of the city, and your thoughtfulness, judgment, and experience were great, a great value to the Planning Commission in the conduct of the responsibilities. And now therefore, be it resolved that the Planning Commission of the City of Gilroy and each member individually recognize and thank Paul Clucker for four years of dedicated public service and contributions to the city, and offer best wishes and good luck and success in all future endeavors.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Just want to say thanks. Suffering from bad cold tonight, I just want to say thanks to members of the Commission. I really appreciate working with you for the last couple of years, and I value, as I continue on, I value your independence and judgment which you have always shown, and I certainly encourage that to continue as you recommend various items to the City Council. And I would certainly ask that if there's any questions of any kind that you may have from time to time for myself or other members of the Council, please feel free to give me a call or contact me with anything that's either positive or negative. We'll deal with it. So, once again, I want to thank you, and certainly for the staff, for their quality, independent, and very thorough reports. And thanks also for our attorney, for the advice you've given us from time to time. And I want to say that I have thoroughly enjoyed the time that I have spent on the Planning Commission. I look forward to the next few years in a little bit different seat. Thank you again very much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next item, approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion? No? Oh, there's no. Oh, don't have any minutes from last time? Okay. All right, we'll do this next meeting. Okay, presentation by members of the public. Are there any? I don't see anybody. Okay, next item, public hearings. Item A, tentative map 1601, request subdivision of a 29.85 acre site into 59 single-family lots, 26 duet lots in the McCutcheon Creek neighborhood, and 33 single-family lots in the Palomino neighborhood. One lot for future development, one remainder lot, nine private open space lots, one public open space lot, and associated public and private streets. This property is located northeast of Santa Teresa Boulevard, south of Club Drive. This project is located within the Glen Loma Ranch specific plan area and is commonly known as the McCutcheon Creek and Palomino neighborhoods. An environmental impact report has been certified for the proposed project. Application filed by Tim Felice and John Felice representing the Glen Loma Group. And their address is in Wren in Gilroy, first staff report.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. This evening, we are here to discuss the McCutcheon Creek and Palomino subdivision. And this is a subdivision of just under 30 acres of land that's located within the Glen Loma Ranch specific plan area. And this property will be subdivided into 59 single-family lots. The site is indicated on this aerial, in this area. And north of the site is the Olive Grove neighborhood, also within the Glen Loma Ranch specific plan area. To the east of the site is the Uves Creek Park Preserve. West is Eagle Ridge and Santa Teresa Boulevard. And south is the Asensio Soler Sanro Middle School and a future city park. This property, or the subdivision, consists of two separate neighborhoods. The first neighborhood is the McCutcheon Creek neighborhood. And this is the neighborhood that is closest to Santa Teresa Boulevard. This neighborhood will be subdivided into 26 duet lots. And so those are lots that will allow for single-family attached units, so one unit on each lot. And the applicant has proposed this lot design in accordance with the specific plan to try to get some higher-density units in this area, and also to provide a variety of unit types. The duet lots will range from, in size, from about 2,000 square feet to about 4,400 square feet. And this subdivision is next to, adjacent to Santa Teresa Boulevard, but there will be a 100-foot buffer between Santa Teresa Boulevard and the homes. And within this buffer, first of all, this buffer will provide both an acoustic and an aesthetic setback from Santa Teresa Boulevard. But within this buffer, there are three different elements. The first is a channel in the McCutcheon Creek that currently is a water course that flows, originates from south of the Glen Loma Ranch property, and flows into a field that is located in the Palomino neighborhood, and discharges into Uves Creek. This creek is going to be realigned so that it is adjacent to Santa Teresa Boulevard. And it's about a 3.58 acre area that will be within the subdivision. But it's about a 70-foot wide creek area. So this will be revegetated so that it's going to create a natural open space. And this is going to be compatible with the Santa Teresa Trail that will be located directly adjacent to the creek. This, realigning this creek is seen as a benefit to this project and the Glen Loma Ranch subdivision overall because it is going to create a more natural area for the residents that are living in the McCutcheon Creek neighborhood, as well as for the bicyclists and pedestrians that are traveling along the Santa Teresa Trail. Then, on the other side of the Santa Teresa Trail, there is another 15-foot landscape buffer. So the whole area comprises about 100 feet. And then again, that's going to be an aesthetic and an acoustic buffer between the homes and Santa Teresa Boulevard. The neighborhood on the east side of the subdivision, which is the area that's further away from Santa Teresa Boulevard, is the Palomino neighborhood. This will consist of 33 standard single-family lots. And by that, I mean the homes constructed on here will be single-family detached homes. These lots range in size from about 3,400 square feet to about 5,100 square feet. And this neighborhood will construct a focal point, which is this parcel B. And that's about a 0.4 acre lot that will provide for recreational opportunity for future residents of the subdivision. Because of the proximity to Santa Teresa Boulevard and Club Drive, there will be sound walls that are constructed in the subdivision. On Lot 1, there will be an eight-foot-high sound wall on the side and the back of this lot. Lots 20 and 21 will have eight-foot-high sound walls. And lots 10 and 11 will have six-foot-high sound walls, parallel to Santa Teresa Boulevard. Then, the lots that are adjacent to Club Drive, which are lots 2 through 6 and 53 through 59, will also have six-foot-high sound walls adjacent to that street. There will be a buffer adjacent, already discussed the buffer between the walls and Santa Teresa Boulevard, but there will also be a buffer adjacent to Club Drive, a landscape buffer that will provide an aesthetically appealing landscape area adjacent to the sound wall to soften that wall and minimize its visual impacts. This project proposes to construct private streets. And these are going to be looped streets. And the streets are named after people who worked in the Glen Loma Ranch area when it was under production, or were somehow associated with it. The new streets names, street names will be Sideritz Way, Greeley Way, and Friedrich Place. And there will be 120 parking spaces available along those streets. And that will be in addition to the parking that will be provided on lots when those lots develop. As part of the subdivision, the applicant is also creating the lot that will contain the future city park. This is an unnamed park, but in the Glen Loma Ranch specific plan area, it calls it the McCutcheon Creek Park. So this will be a park that the developer Glen Loma Group will develop, and they will dedicate to the city. The applicant is also going to be constructing the Wild Plum Trail, which will lead from that park to the future Surra Drive as part of this subdivision. Because of the adjacency to the park, the applicant has created a public street. So there's a public street leaving from Club Drive, which is Lico Way, to Santiago Place, which is another public street. And this street is going to front on the park so that there's no issue with the public coming in and utilizing this park. They won't need to park in, on private streets, they can utilize a public street. And the two neighborhoods have been designed so that homes will face onto this public street. And that is a best practice. As part of this project, there's also going to be a lot adjacent to Granache Way, which is a commercial reserve piece. This lot was identified in the Glen Loma Ranch specific plan as a potential commercial opportunity site. The lot is required to be maintained and reserved for 10 years from the date of the first tentative map approval for this specific plan area. And that first approval was in May of 2014. So the lot will have to be reserved until May of 2023, I guess. And if after that time, if during that time, the applicant is not able, after good faith efforts, to find a commercial developer for that site, then that property could be developed residentially. This picture just shows you the potential conceptual landscape plan. And this would be the view of the subdivision from Santa Teresa Boulevard. So as you can see, there's going to be quite a bit of landscaping due to that 100-foot buffer area. And this planned view shows you in more detail what that would look like. So this would be the creek area, which will be revegetated with natural vegetation. This is the trail. And then this is the 15-foot buffer area. This landscape plan shows you Club Drive and shows you the treatment along that street, where we will have a landscape strip, then a sidewalk, and then another landscape strip adjacent to the sound wall. In processing this application, there were some conditions of approval that had been identified by our engineering division that the applicant has requested some minor amendments to. There are three conditions that the applicant would like to see amendments to. I just, I included a memo for you on the dais, as well as revised resolution. And I just want to go through the changes that the applicant is requesting. The first is to condition 34B. The applicant is requesting removal of condition 34B, which was a condition that actually does not apply to this tentative map area. It applied to a different tentative map. And so, because of that, staff and crews said the condition is not needed for this map and should be removed. The applicant is also requesting an amendment to condition 38F. And that is a condition that requires the applicant to have approval, currently requires the applicant to have approval of the PG&E joint trench composite plans prior to constructing the joint trench. And the applicant has a concern about that because there are frequently delays getting approval from PG&E. So engineering staff has agreed that the applicant can commence work at risk. And the risk is that if there's an issue, if PG&E has an issue with the design, that the developer will have to redesign the plans and will have to, if they need to reconstruct any of the improvements, that they will have to do that at their own cost. And because the applicant bears all the responsibility for making these improvements, or making corrections to the improvements, staff has no issue with the proposed reordering of this condition. And staff also recommends that condition 30, what was condition 38G just be reformatted so that it's now condition 38F2. And just, the reason for that is that it's closely aligned with condition 38F. And then the last change that the applicant is requesting is a change to condition 52. This is a change that relates to the construction schedule and the project's interface with the Gilroy Unified School District. Right now, the condition states that work done during the time schools and sessions shall be limited to the hours requested by the Gilroy Unified School District. And the applicant has requested deletion of that sentence because it could allow the school district to have complete control over the applicant's construction schedule. However, the applicant has agreed to inform the GUSD and neighbors of the construction schedule. And staff does believe that, as originally alerted, this condition would be too restrictive. So we do recommend removing the second sentence as requested by the applicant. So we are recommending approval of all of these requested changes. And with that, staff has analyzed the proposed project, and we do recommend that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending that the City Council approve tentative map application TM 1601, subject to the findings in the staff report and in the resolution, in the conditions in the resolution. And I can answer any questions you have.
Commissioner Kailai.
Have you talked to the school district as to where the children will be, which school they'll be going out of there? There's quite a number of students out of that project.
The school district currently has a policy of utilizing neighborhood schools. So presumably, they would be attending the schools near the site. But I don't know that the school district guarantees that, but that is definitely their intention.
Because the closest one I can think of is Los Anamos. And that's quite, and that school, I think, is pretty much close to capacity.
That's true. And the school district is planning to construct a new school.
So is that going to be in cooperation with this development, so?
No, it doesn't need to be in cooperation with this development because it's a separate project.
I understand.
The, it's anticipated that this development would be developed quite a ways, time-wise, quite a bit before the school district starts construction of its new school.
That's what I thought. So there're going to be some congestion in school, I just want to know.
Oh, there may be, there may be some temporary congestion.
And I just wanted to have long discussion in the school district to alleviate that problem.
Well, I mean, the way they would alleviate it probably would be temporary means until they construct the new school. I mean, either they would send the students to a school that has an undersupply or, let's say, adequate capacity to house the students. Or they would construct temporary measures on-site to house the students.
The reason why I asked it, that doesn't appear to be neighborhood school. So it's going to be school buster traffic once you run it there in the morning?
Well, yeah, there may be an interim period where they're not able to utilize the neighborhood school concept, but once this, the new school is constructed, then the school district's policy would be utilizing neighborhood schools.
I agree, but when you start, there may be a lot of traffic due to school buses and everything in the morning.
Yes, there may be an interim period.
Thank you.
Sorry, Commissioner Gullen.
Just one minor thing. In your presentation, you mentioned that the sound walls were going to be six feet high. On the plan, it's eight feet high, so six feet is correct?
So it should just say eight feet on Lot 1. And the lots that are adjacent to Santa Teresa Boulevard, closest to Santa Teresa Boulevard. The ones that are further away from Santa Teresa Boulevard will be six feet high. So that would be these two lots that are set back a little bit further from Santa Teresa Boulevard, but are still parallel to it. And all of the lots along Club Drive, except Lot 1, those would be six feet high.
So Lot 1 towards Santa Teresa is eight feet or six feet?
It's eight feet. All of Lot 1 is going to be eight feet high because of the proximity to Santa Teresa Boulevard and Club Drive. But the, other than these other two lots in this area, which will have eight-foot-high walls, all the other walls will be six feet high.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you. Melissa, I'd like to know a little bit more about the relocation of the creek. Where that creek crosses Club Drive, are they going to build a bridge there?
There will be a bridge.
Okay, and have they, I assume that they're going to extend all the way through the school district property? Didn't, the school district, aren't the school district going to build a school across the street?
Oh, yeah, so you're saying that the creek's going to be realigned?
Yeah, the creek would be aligned and run right through that property.
Yes. Well, I don't know actually what, how much property the school district is going to purchase. It may be that the Glen Loma Ranch retains the portion that McCutcheon Creek will run through. That likely is the case. So the school district would likely purchase just the area that they will be developing of the school. And I can, the applicant is here, and he can clarify that.
Okay, I was just wondering if the, if the school district was aware of what they were doing with the creek?
On my, you know, I'm speculating somewhat, and I'll have the applicant clarify, but my guess is that the school district would just be purchasing the property that they would be developing, and not, and not the creek property.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, the applicant's engineer will answer the question.
Commissioner Armandares, do you want to?
Yeah, can you tell me again what the size of the park will be? How many acres that, the larger park will be?
It's, the total area is more than, let me just see. Actually, I've got it in the staff report. I can find this citation for you. Okay, that's parcel A2, so it's 4.8 acres. But not all of that is going to be usable recreational area. Usually, it's about three acres for the usable recreational area. And the remainder, there's, there is a riparian area in that area. So part of it's going to be just natural area that people won't be utilizing.
Okay.
Except to view it.
Is there a plan to build restrooms there?
We don't normally build restrooms in neighborhood parks, usually only in regional parks, like Los Anamos Veterans Park.
Because I thought, in the way you described it, it sounded like it would be more of a community.
It's a neighborhood park. It's really intended to just serve the neighborhood, to serve people living in and around that area within Glen Loma Ranch. So typically, we do not build restrooms in those parks of that size. Do you have any more questions?
I have another question, yeah. In regards to the limitations by Gilroy Unified in terms of construction times being allowed, has there been a problem in the past with other construction sites and the school district being, you know, too overbearing or too restrictive?
I don't ever recall seeing this condition before. I think there's some sensitivity because, well, because the school is there and it's already existing, and there's always, you know, concerns about traffic flow and trying to get the kids dropped off in a timely manner in the morning. But I've never actually seen a condition like this before. One thing I will say is that the applicant will be constructing Surra Drive through to its connecting point, prior to any construction taking place in these neighborhoods, in this area. So there will be another access point for people if they want to go through Surra Drive. So they're not limited just to Club Drive, if construction is indeed an issue.
And that's around through, by Los Anamos, is it?
Surra Drive connects through to, I think it's, it works on? Valley-Bunning and Santa Teresa. It goes through another neighborhood that is to the south of the site. Thank you.
Commissioner Gullen.
Yeah, another quick question. The duet lots, these are zero lot line construct, single-family. Attached, and they're attached side by side or back to back?
Side by side. Oftentimes, the attachment is at the garage.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you. One more question, I guess. On the relocation of the creek, the bridge that's going to be constructed, is it going to be built to accommodate the traffic circle that's coming at that intersection?
Yes, it would definitely, I've got the engineer, he's going to answer that question for you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Chris Patton, and I'm the engineer for this project with R.Jerry Jensen Azar. The, there is an existing box culvert under Club Drive that was constructed when Club Drive was put through 12 years ago or so. So the culvert is there, it's just buried. And it'll be exposed and widened a little bit on its sides to accommodate the wider trail and landscaping at that entry feature up there. So that bridge or culvert already exists. And then your other question about, as the creek goes across the property that has been known as the Olive Grove neighborhood, where the school district has purchased a portion of that property, the Glen Loma Ranch retained the portion of the land where the creek realignment is going to go. And in our involvement with the school district, they are aware of the relocation of the creek going there. It was a feature in the specific plan, so they were very much aware of it.
So just to clarify then, the, they're not going to construct a new bridge?
No.
There's an existing culvert?
Yes.
And you're going to widen that space to accommodate the traffic circle?
The, it is being widened to accommodate the trails and wider sidewalks at the entry that are going to go there. There is not a design currently for a traffic circle there for us to look at and make sure that the culvert is wide enough to accommodate it. So we're not aware of any plan line or anything that exists that shows that, how it would go. There is a possibility that it would have to be widened somewhat or the circle offset in order to accommodate it at that location.
Okay, so I guess I should ask Melissa then, since the school district was in here just a month or so ago, and at that meeting, we talked about the traffic circle. Then would the, the school district then would be responsible for widening the street to accommodate the traffic circle?
Yes, they would.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? I don't see anyone. Okay, we can open public comment, or do we want to hear from? Open public comment? Anyone? In Planning Commission Disclosure of Exparte, no? Oh, close the, sorry, I closed the public comment. Planning Commission Disclosure, Exparte Communications, I see none, possible action? Do we have a motion? We have a motion by Commissioner Fisher, if you could please state your motion.
I make a motion that we adopt a resolution recommending the City Council approve TM 1601, including the new information that was given to us tonight.
We have a second by Commissioner Gullen. We have a second by Commissioner Gowan? Please vote. It's a roll call. Okay, this motion passes, and it's a roll call.
Commissioner Ashford?
Yes.
Commissioner Gowan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Armandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Ly?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next item, old business, I see none. New business, I guess, we're not, we're not gonna do this.
Yes, so staff is recommending that this item be continued to the February second meeting, our next regular meeting, so that we can appoint a new chair and vice-chair at the same meeting.
Great.
One thing I'll add is that we will have new commissioners too, so it's probably better that we have the new commissioners here elect the chair and the vice-chair and all of that at the same time, so.
Sounds good.
Does that include appointments to the, to the other committees?
Yes, so we'll be talking about that under the manager's report.
Okay. Okay, correspondence, none, informational items, current planning projects?
Actually, I had made a motion that we continue this, I think we need a motion for that.
Oh, to continue it?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for your motion.
Motion is to continue this item to our next regular meeting.
Rebecca seconds?
Yes.
Please vote. Motion passes? Okay. Current planning projects?
No report, so the reports are attached in the agenda packet, if commissioners have any questions.
Planning staff approvals, presentations by members of the Planning Commission. Oh. You put it, did you wanna say something, or that was before? Okay, go ahead.
Last night, I attended a meeting for the barn.
Oh, the barn.
The barn is moving forward. They, I believe they're going to do the top cupolo portion in historic, it's salvageable, that portion, so they're looking at a redwood shingle on the roof on that portion of it. The bottom section for now will probably be done in the same type of galvanized metal until they can repair a few other portions of it. Tim Lance was there, historian from California, so he brought a lot of information. Read, from, architect from Gilroy has offered to do the plans for him. And so they turned everything out to bid on a few different things, and they're working towards getting some things done. So if there's any extra money out there, anybody's willing to put at the barn, the roof is going to be expensive to do the whole thing in a redwood shingle, but they're trying to bring it back to what it was originally done in the 1800s. I know the group's going to Las Vanas on Saturday to meet with the Miller Group in Las Vanas, and they have found some photographs of the barn from the original design.
Oh, wow.
So they're, they're working real hard to move at that, so. Their funds are, they've got the money now to help get the roof on it and secure it, and then they'll start on the rest of it after that, as more money comes in, so. It's, it was a good meeting, it was fine to see somebody really, that they're really moving forward to getting this accomplished. And I think there's some other people that are stepping up with, you know, seeing that now they really are moving towards, they're not just trying to save the barn now, they're really trying to put it back together.
That's great.
No, I think they're doing a good job, so. And that was.
That was it, okay.
The report from the meeting, yeah.
Is there anybody else, do you have any presentations? Oh, you do.
I do.
Oh, you.
I know.
Okay, go ahead.
It's okay, I'm sitting securely.
You were sitting so long.
No, this may be my last meeting, my term is up. I have put in an application to be interviewed for the position, but you never know. So in case I'm not here, it was a pleasure and an honor serving with everyone here, and we'll see what happens.
We'll bring cake next week.
Yeah.
All right. Oral reports by commissioners, city council meetings, doesn't look like there was anything or anyone to report, right? Vacant in council? Housing advisory, is there anything? Historic heritage?
No meeting.
Arts and culture, that's vacant, South County Joint Planning Advisory Committee, it's vacant. Street naming committee?
No meeting.
Developmental task, standards task force?
No meeting.
General Plan Advisory Committee?
No meeting.
High-speed rail?
No meeting.
Okay. All right, and it's your turn, planning.
We actually have a lot to discuss, so, just, so kind of piggybacking on the selection of the chair, vice-chair. So with the new year, there is a lot of new appointments that needs to be made in addition to those two positions. You also need to look at who will be representing the commission on the various committees, as well as who will be attending the council meetings for this next calendar year. So if you can start looking at your calendars and having a sense of what, if you do have a preference of one, what committee you want to represent, if you want to remain on the same one, or if you want an opportunity to participate on a different committee, now would be the time to kind of look at that and see where your interests are, or the timing of those meetings if it conflicts with your schedule. So if you can look at that and also look at the council meeting agenda and have a sense of which ones that you would not be able to attend, so that at the February meeting, what I would like to do is go ahead and make the appointments of which commissioners will be attending which council meetings, and then kind of locking in who would be the representative on the various committees. So that will be on the agenda for the next meeting. And if you do have a sense before the next meeting, feel free to send me an email of your preference, because if I hear from everyone and there are no overlap in interest, I can go ahead and put a draft scheduled together already, and then it'd be, we could just review it and approve it at the next meeting. So that'd probably be the easiest way to approach that. So in addition to that, the meeting schedule, at the back of your binder, there is the calendar of Planning Commission meetings for 2016. So we will have an updated calendar for 2017. We already know that there are two meetings, so there might be a conflict. The first one would be occurring in March, the first meeting in March, March 2nd, is in the middle of the League of California Cities Planning Commission's Academy, and I'll be talking about that next, but I would encourage some of the representatives of the commission to attend that. I think historically, we've had a couple of commissioners attend that academy, which is a great kind of way to introduce you to the roles of the Planning Commission and the different updates to the laws that have been enacted since maybe you may have attended your last overview. And that is occurring March 1 to 3, so the March 2nd Planning Commission meeting, I already know that'd be a conflict. And then there's another League of California Cities Conference that the deputy city attorney will be attending in May, so we'll need to look at that calendar. So at the next meeting, we're gonna be looking at a lot of different dates, so if you can have a good sense of what your calendar will be, so that we can lock in those dates.
Are the city council meetings already publicized?
Yeah, they should be on the agenda.
Okay.
On the website. Yes, they should be on the web.
But they're on the website?
And what I could, we could send an email to all the commissioners with the council agenda.
So in March, would we have, like, two weeks later, have our regular meeting?
Right.
Okay, and then May also?
Most likely, yes. So right now, we have reserved the first and second, oh, excuse me, first and third Thursdays of the month.
Right.
So we may skip the first meeting and then meet the third.
Okay. Could that include the committee assignments, like the dates that they meet? Because I know some of them don't have meeting schedules.
Oh, yes, so we will include that in the email that we send to the commissioners, thank you. And so with respect to the League Academy, as I mentioned, it's going to be held March 1 to 3, and it's gonna be in Los Angeles Airport Marriott. We do have some funds budgeted, again, for a couple of commissioners to attend. So if you have not attended one of these academies or it's been a while, please let me know your interest, and depending on the interest I get, I'll have to see if we'll need to narrow down the number of attendees, or hopefully, you know, our budget would allow for whoever wants to attend. But send me your interest if you would like to attend. I'll include this email with the list of calendar dates, so you have a better understanding, and you can kind of go to the website to see what's being offered, to see if you are interested in attending.
The email is about the academy and what it offers?
And let's see, the meeting schedule assignments, council meeting, oh. One last thing, so since we haven't identified who will be attending the council meetings, there is a council, oh, actually, two things, there is a council meeting next Monday, and then another meeting in January, so I am looking for volunteers, or at least maybe if you're able to pick that as your assignment for the city council meeting, I need commissioner or commissioners to attend the January meetings.
Well, I would expect I would be doing it, I would be next in line to do it anyway, so.
January is your month?
Because, yeah, January would have been my month anyway, because they're done, you know, everybody, it rotates, so.
Oh, perfect, so can you do January 9 and 23?
Yes.
So, thank you, and with that, I have a package to hand to you.
She just happens to have the package, ready.
All right, I already looked at it.
You've done your homework in advance. And the last thing, so it sounds like many of you already heard or have been invited to a special study session with the city council on Tuesday, January 17. This will be at 6:00 PM here at the council chambers, and the purpose is to discuss three things. One is the general plan update process. Now that the urban growth boundary initiative is passed, the question is, how do we move forward? So that'll be discussed at the study session. The second item that will be discussed is the high-speed rail stationary plan. So the commission's already had the opportunity to weigh in on the status so far. Now, this is an opportunity for the commission and the council to discuss that planning effort. And the last issue has to do with banners. So there, so all three items, formal action will not be taken since it is just a study session, but it's a great opportunity for the commission and the council to get together and kind of ask questions of the topics and discuss the matters. So that'll be Tuesday, January 17, 6:00 PM, the council chambers. And the reason why it's on a Monday is because of the holiday on the 16th, in case anyone's wondering why it's a Tuesday.
Will staff be there to discuss some of the new things that are coming up with the train that they're just finding out, with the high-speed rail, or is this old news, or are we gonna have something?
In terms of new, I am not aware of any new information that's being presented to the groups other than it's new to the council since they haven't, this will be the first time they're hearing about the stationary plan since February, when we were looking at the three alternatives. So it's newer to them, but not to the commission. As far as I know, there's nothing new that the commission hasn't heard yet that will be discussed at the commission meeting.
Well, I think they dropped on us the fact that they want to raise and lower, make downtown Monterey Street a roller coaster. I think that was a big drop, but it hasn't come up, I haven't missed a meeting yet, other, I did miss the one in San Martin, but this is the first time they brought it before us, and I thought that that, I think it should go back to a couple of the committees. I think there needs to be more discussion on some of this, so David Bischoff will be there?
Yes, David Bischoff will be presenting the stationary plan project. Stan Ketchum will be presenting the general plan update process, and.
The consultant will be there also, the one the city's hired?
And high-speed rail representatives will be there as well.
Okay, so, or the high-speed rail will be there as well?
Yes.
So Sacramento will send somebody, or?
I'm not sure which office they're coming from, but there will be representatives of high-speed rail attending that.
Including our, the consultant, what's his name?
Bruce, Bruce.
Right.
Bruce is his first name, I don't want to state his last name, but I'll have to confirm, I'm not sure if the consultant will be there. But I do know David and the representatives of high-speed rail will be there.
Well, I'd like to see that we maybe have some drawings of what they're talking about. Instead of saying there's just gonna be a dip in the road, we've gone and shot some elevations, and I have some real questions about that. And I would like to see some drawings other than just, we're gonna put a dip in the road on six locations on Monterey Street.
I will make that request.
Thank you.
It'll be like driving on First Street, right?
Almost. That's my report.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, I have no, nothing to say, no report. And so we can adjourn until our next meeting, February 2nd, at 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.